That being said, I need a motion to go to closed session, please.
We'll move.
Mr. Morris has made a motion to go to closed session, all in favor. Oh, I didn't, you want to tell us for what reason? Under what statute is supposed to admit and say that?
Oh, you know, it's in your folder, Mayor.
It's in my folder?
In your folder.
Yeah, Karen's got it quicker.
The record. Closed session under NCGS 143.318.11A3 to consult with attorney to protect attorney-client privilege.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ready?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Eddie Moore with McAdams. McAdams is a land development design firm, and we are assisting Cody Semino with MI Homes, and do appreciate your time this evening. Before we get into some of the site items, Cody's going to give you a little information about MI Homes.
Thank you, Eddie, we appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Don't want to bore you guys with a lot of the details, but as you look up on the screen here, I just want to tell you a little bit about MI Homes as a company and who we are. We are a number thirteen builder in the top one hundreds, we're in the top fifteen of the national builders. We were founded in 1976, went public in 1993. We're still currently owned by the Schottenstein family, so a lot of the values that were enlisted when the founding of the company are still currently in place. As you can see, there's some financial data here that we put in here, and really what I'm just trying to explain to you guys is some of the strong results that we've had is that we have, hopefully can give you some guys some confidence in the projects that we go underneath for zoning, that we can actually start them and finish them. We have the financial backing. We don't walk away from our projects when it's halfway complete or anything like that. So, really, just kind of wanted to explain a little bit about ourselves. Again, you can look into the details if you'd like to, but that's really just what I was going to run through there. Next slide we have here. This is just a list of the communities that we have in the Charlotte market. As you can see, we do surround Charlotte pretty much on all sides, but I do want to point out, we currently have six different projects in Union County that we're actively either developing or going through the zoning process right now. One of which in Indian Trail is the Harper's Run community. It's a townhome community off of Chestnut. We are actually just opened up for sales, so I would encourage you guys at any time if you'd like to go and look at an MI Homes community. You can hit any of the, in the Union County area, or any of the above as well. All the addresses are listed on our website, and you can also reach out to me directly if you have any questions on anything like that. So, I'll get through the boring stuff, and I'll let Eddie come back to explain the site we have.
Thank you, Cody. The site we're looking at is located west of Independence Boulevard, east of Plyler, and south of Unionville Indian Trail Road. Kind of superimpose the site plan that we'll get into here in a little bit of the site itself. We have twelve and a half acres roughly. The owner will retain the top three acres. That's not part of this rezoning, so we would come in with creating and just cutting out the twelve point four. Most of the property is actually zoned non-residential. It's probably about two-thirds commercially zoned currently, and the east piece is zoned SF1. So, our request, we're looking at seventy-nine single-family attached dwellings. That comes out to a density of about six point three homes an acre. We'll go over this with the site plan. We do have about twenty-five percent of the site will be dedicated as tree save, and we have those strategically located in certain areas. One good thing about this property, it's an infill piece, and we do have multiple points of connectivity and future connectivity that will help the area, and we're also proposing a centralized active amenity. So, kind of focusing in on the site, Lidl is directly to the east, and what we do have is a road connection. We'll be tying into the street that is currently behind Lidl. We've had discussions with them of making this connection, and that will be our, primarily our secondary access point. The primary access point will be along Unionville Indian Trail Road. And what we've done, we, instead of having units going out to that small finger along Unionville Indian Trail, we've, we're preserving the trees on both sides, so you kind of come in, you have a feel, and then you come into the neighborhood itself. With this site, we do not have any cul-de-sacs that are proposed, and the connectivity is actually, it tees up pretty well from a north, south, east, and west aspect. Touch the north and the east, the south, we will be connecting to, connecting to the future, well, the connection with Lidl that'll run along the south boundary, which will provide ample access to the property to the south. And we even have, within this area where the little stub is, right away, that'll be dedicated to the, to the west should the properties along Plyler ever redevelop. So, we'll have points of connectivity in all different directions. We do have a pedestrian connection point that is just north of the detention pond. That'll be, you know, walkable path for the front of the Lidl store. Have a centralized amenity. We do, we have it at that location just due to the fact that there's more room that is behind that with the tree save area, but that can be moved even, you know, into the site to make it even more centrally located. Talked about the tree save. We're primarily keeping the trees along the north boundary and the west boundary to our neighbors, and we are proposing on-street parking. The two north-south streets that are shown on the site plan, we do have on-street parking that is, that's along one side of those streets. This is a, okay, yes, this is the revised rendering that you do, that we have for the, for the project, and if you look at the roof lines that's being proposed, there's not a monolithic roof line there. There are various peaks, there are dormers, and various breaks within each individual unit, just so it just doesn't have that one flat top roof look. And that applies also to the front of the units where they're recessed. All the units do have a recess feature as part of those. All units will have garages, driveways, and the varying types of exterior building materials. We have horizontal, vertical, and shake-style siding that's on the property, and also brick or stone accents that are, that will be around the garages. This will be very similar to what Cody outlined in the Harper Mill, Harper Run, I'm sorry, development. Just a little takeaways from, you know, the current market. Everyone knows that Charlotte, you know, this area, this region is very hot. The 2019 census came out with numbers that we have about one hundred and twenty-two people moving here each day, so it's not a matter of if or when. It's occurring and ongoing, and we do have a significant housing shortage. We do have a group that's called Zonda. They used to be called Metrozade. We're very fortunate to have them. They only research the residential market within our region. They are nationwide, but we do have a group that is here, and the little map that's to the right in some of these bullets, this came directly from them, of course, Demandstrong, and the colorful map on the right shows about the location of the site, and they are projecting that most of the, a majority of the growth will be along the east side of the region over the next five years. So, that is our presentation. We would definitely like to entertain any, any, you know, suggestions, options for our development. I can go back to the site plan, we can talk from. Cody can talk a little bit more, you know, about the product itself, but we'd just like to see if this is a development that would fit in well within this area and also the town. We think we're meeting the intent of the adopted land use plan of providing a, an additional housing type that is not within this area, and also the connectivity points to get, to get traffic off of Unionville Indian Trail Road with what we have set up with our layout. Thank you very much.
Karen, do you have any questions?
Comments?
Go ahead.
Well, my first comment is, this property, you said most of it is zoned commercial presently?
Yes, sir.
We need commercial property here in Indian Trail desperately. We need it to be developed. I'm not so inclined to take commercial property and then redevelop it into residential. The other thing is, there's seventy-nine units, I believe you said?
Yes, sir.
I would be more supportive if there was about half of that. That is very dense in there. You look at the surrounding property owners and the density of their properties, six-tenth acres, six-tenth acres, six-tenths, and then you jump seventy-nine onto twelve acres. It's a lot to, and by the way, I live right across the street.
Yes.
I'm sure you're aware of that. I'm glad that that three acres is going to be remaining there for now. I think that it should be developed for commercial though, that is, commercial corridor walkability. I've lived there for twen, over twenty years, and you ain't walking nowhere there, because there's no sidewalk along that road, and if you did have a sidewalk, if you tried to cross Independence making that walkability, that's dangerous in itself. I just think it's the wrong thing for this particular area at this time.
Todd?
Well, I was kind of waiting on, see if it was going to pass the military barracks thing, but anyway, they, I'm not really inclined to flip commercial to high-density residential, so that's, you know, I kind of feel like we need to hold on to our commercial zoning, so that's, that's the only comment I've got, but thanks.
David?
How much are they? How much do they sell for?
Cody?
So, that's always an interesting question that's always, it's market-driven, but I will say that we just opened up the Harper's Run community down the street, and we are selling from the upper two-nineties into the three-hundreds. The first home that just sold this past weekend was at three-twenty-one, so we anticipate around the similar price points there.
That's all. Mike?
I kind of agree with everybody else, you know, this is all commercial, and, you know, I think we need commercial more than we need residents at this point in time.
Marcus?
I don't have any comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Ten-minute recess.
All righty.
Someone's coming in. Bing, welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the pledge.
By the flag of the United States of America, and this republic, over which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as well.
If you will remain standing for a moment of silence. May be seated. This time, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, Mr. Town Manager?
You, you should have a revised agenda before you, which we take, we took a couple things off consent that you see, and we placed it under new business, but other than what you have, there's no changes.
Okay. We need a motion to move add item eleven A, ABC Store Update, move item eight C to item eleven B, and move item eight D to eleven C, which has already been printed on your agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Morris made the motion, all in favor? A show of hands. The record's still, that was unanimous. If there's no further additions or deletions, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please. Mr. Collins made the motion with a show of hands, all in favor. That, too, is unanimous. Brings us to presentations. Our first is for Constitution Week, a proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, where September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one marks two hundred and thirty-fourth anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. Whereas public law nine-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. And now therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, do hereby and proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly, vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In testimony whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause it to be affixed to the great seal of the town of North Carolina on this fourteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-one. Our second presentation is for SP Orthodontics. Afternoon. This is a time when we welcome new businesses to come introduce themselves briefly. Tell us where you're located and what you do.
Perfect. Well, thank you, members of council, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Dr. Neil Patel. My partner, Dr. Sanya, unfortunately was not able to make it today. We are orthodontists. We've opened up a new practice just down the road on Potter Road where the Harris Cedar Austin Village Complex is. We've been open about a month and a half, and as I mentioned, we're both orthodontists, so we practice and see patients for braces and clear liner treatment, pretty much ages seven and up. We are open Tuesday through Friday, so we are closed on Mondays from eight AM to five PM. And just a little bit about us, myself and my partner. We, we've been practicing in the Charlotte area individually for about five years each, so about ten years of experience between the two of us in different locations. This is our first venture together as a practice, but we're really excited to kind of be in this community and look forward to kind of interacting with all of you hopefully in the near future. I do have little bios I did bring. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to hand out to council members or leave it with someone else. Perfect. But yeah, thank you so much for your time.
If you can step forward. Doctor?
I have a question.
Yes?
How'd you come to pick Indian Trail?
Great question. So, both myself and my partner, we've, of course, been looking in the areas of, we're both fairly young, both of us just recently got married. Actually, my partner's getting married this weekend, that's why he's out this week, but we've been looking in terms of where we currently live, kind of closer to Uptown Charlotte, of where we'd want to kind of settle down and eventually start families, and so we were basically, that's kind of what we were looking at in terms of long-term. So, we were both looking at long-term eventually moving down to here in this area, Union County. Kind of school district was kind of one of the big draw factors for us of having kids in, you know, one of the best counties school-wise, so that was kind of the leading factor. So, next phase is looking for houses and kind of starting that whole process, and so that was kind of the predominating factor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Well, as a parent who's paid for five kids with braces, I say welcome in, Indian Trail.
Thank you, thank you. And our big-picture goal is really, you know, we're younger orthodontists, is really a technology-forward practice, utilizing technology to make treatment more efficient, fewer appointments, less time out of school, but also being able to bring costs down on that end as well. So, you know, a lot of things have changed in the last ten to fifteen years that have really made treatment way easier for kids and adults, but a lot of the offices that we've both worked at have been kind of stuck in kind of some of the older routines and older systems, and so that's kind of why we've decided to venture out on our own and see if we can make it a more efficient process, a more financially, you know, easy process for parents, especially, you know, during times like now. And so, yeah, that's kind of a, kind of where we're at.
Good luck.
Thank you.
This time, I will open the public comments. Thank you for your interest in communicating with the Indian Trail Town Board. Comments will be recorded and can be heard on the Internet. Please note the following rules when addressing the Indian Trail Town Council. Each speaker has three minutes to speak to council. Please elect one speaker for groups whenever possible regarding the same message. Comments should be directed to all council members and not to specific individuals. Speakers are to remain respectful with reasonable standards of civility. Anonymous emails will not be read. Written public comments will be read for a restricted period of twenty minutes; then emails will be noted as opposing or supporting. Any grievance regarding the staff should be committed, communicated to the town manager or town attorney and not aired in this forum. Meeting facilitator may discontinue or disallow the speaker to continue if rules are violated. All documents provided will become town property and will be available to the public. Jeremy Fabian.
Just like then, I didn't.
Oh, okay. Michael Falkenberry.
Good evening. I will state my name, Michael Falkenberry, on Nineteen Picket Circle, even though when the policy is read before the council meeting, it's not mentioned. I want to point that out. Many of you campaigned, if elected, you would do away with the drama during council meetings. What happened during the August twenty-fourth council meeting? Emails sent to the mayor and council asking a simple question were ignored. I obtained the emails from the town of Indian Trail to see what was happening, and email was not read during public comments that was sent asking to do so. During the August twenty-fourth meeting, the first two public commenters did not provide their name and address, while a third speaker, Jonathan Baer, was held to, was told to do so by Mr. McIntyre. Then the mayor accused Mr. Baer he didn't sign up for public comments, yet the mayor called Mr. Baer's name to speak. Town clerk said she did write his name down. Mr. Baer didn't know that the sign-up sheet is now located in the lobby before it was located in the council chambers. Mayor did apologize. However, during council comments, Mayor Alvarez stated, "Certain individuals seem to not want to write their name, use thony names and titles. I submitted a public information request asking for documents to prove the mayor's accusations. There were none found. All the sign-up sheets are destroyed once the meeting minutes are created. In ten years of me attending council meetings, all council meeting minutes have a name for public comments. All three town clerks I have known, or now know, would never allow fake names or not allow any name not to be published." Let me see. Mayor Alvarez did try to cover his embarrassment with another lie, though, however, with that comment. As for the mayor saying the word transparent, then why was his government text messages redacted that I received in two thousand nineteen since he used his government phone for his campaign contact? Thank you very much.
This time, I'll close public comments and go to council feedback. Anyone?
I have none.
Okay. Brings us to Captain James.
Good evening, the mayor and council. I apologize, let me start off by saying I may sound a little mumbled. My allergies are driving me nuts, so I've got a lot of dreams going on, and both my ears feel like they're stocked up, so it's like a wah-wah-wah kind of thing, yeah. But anyway, I put a, there in front of you, you have the, the August numbers and stats. Nothing really jumps out at me, and shouldn't at you, is a big change from month to month. We're, our reportables are still staying around two-twenty, or in August, we're two-twenty-seven, three hundred and eighty-five business checks, and then two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five preventative patrols, one hundred and thirty-five traffic crashes, and that's still running that same number that we're dealing with and trying to, there's not way, much of a way for us to curtail the parking lot wrecks and the bump-ups, which are still going to be counted in there, but like I said, our injuries are still holding down, which is what we, what we wanted. For the grant guys and traffic, they made four hundred and fifteen traffic stops, issued one hundred and forty-nine warnings, and then six hundred and thirty-one traffic and criminal charges during the month of August. I'd also like to, to speak to them. Friday night, they conducted a saturation patrol, and as part of the grant, they had to do so many, so many proactive events. They came to Indian Trail, our two traffic cars, plus the safety unit cars, a couple cars from Monroe's Traffic Division, and Stallons, worked town in Indian Trail for about three and a half hours, roughly three and a half to four hours Friday night. In that four-hour period, issued seventy charges, initiated one chase, and ended up in a crash in Monroe with a subject that had, was wanted, and then arrested two other fugitives during that four-hour saturation, and that was all on seventy-four Friday night. So, I like, those, those guys are doing a ginormous job, and they're working their tails off for you and for the town. Any questions about the stats or anything from last month? Okay, one other thing I'd like to speak to you right quick.
Captain?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'll, at the end, I'll ask questions.
Okay. As you're all aware, Deputy Henry's been working on the parking issues in the town for about two years now. Has made leaps and bounds and progress in getting, especially working within the communities and get the HOAs to step up and somewhat help. He came up with this idea about a temporary street parking pass, and what's happened, just to kind of give you a little history on this, if we have an issue with parking, whether it be multiple vehicles parked in a roadway, parked around a home, and a normal patrol officer, and when I say one of my patrol guys end up going and responding to an issue, they're in HOA, may have reached out to Deputy Henry about, and he may, may have sent an email out to the patrol guys, but it didn't, once it got to him, they ended up still, the resident still called nine-one-one complaining about it. Deputy Henry's come up with a color system on a temporary parking pass that's free, and such if Mr. Collins having a birthday party or a shower or something of that, or something of that sort, where you've got multiple visitors coming to visit and trying to line up street parking, that where whoever the homeowner is would come by the office and say, "I need four parking passes." So, instead of me having this, or one of our officers having to go start banging on doors, trying to find drivers of vehicles and run vehicles down, that they pull up and they say this lane on the dash, they know that that particular color's for, for a party, but it's also got the address and the owner's information and a telephone number. So, if there's something that's parked in front of a fire hydrant, we need to get it moved in an emergency, that we've got a contact available right there on that parking pass. There's three, three different colors. This green one is, which is something we deal with a lot is maintenance, maid services, that kind of thing, that park in front of a home, and they're there every so often every week. They would come by and be issued one for a six-month period of time, and when they're in any of the Indian Trail communities, that goes on their dash. So, if somebody does call nine-one-one complaining about a parking issue, the officer responding finds that. Special event like I spoke of, and then medical or healthcare. If we've got a hospice nurse, God forbid, that's having to work out of a residence or whatever the case may be, that, that car is identifiable as somebody that's, that's working for in the medical field, but also it gives us an address where they're at and the phone number where we can contact them if we need to. I spoke to Ms. Dees about this and working in conjunction with, with code enforcement. What we'd like to do is try this over the next period, next three months, during the holiday season especially, just to see how it works, and if it doesn't work, and we can't tell the difference in it, we'll, we'll scrap it. But if it does work and it proves to be beneficial between us and the HOAs, and maybe cutting calls for service down, that it would, it would do what it was designed to do. And I'd just like, if y'all have any feedback on that, or I'd be glad answering questions about it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you brought up HOAs, so that's really how you're going to put this together, is go to the HOAs and start with them?
We want, we're on, we want to work with HOAs and let them blast it.
Right.
Along with us. It's going to get with Ms. Abby and let Ms. Abby help us as well to let everybody know that it's available, that we've got this available. And then, once we blast this into the communities and it goes through newsletters and people start finding out about it, I feel like, you know, given the three-month period of time, that'll kind of give us an idea, you know, long enough for it to get out, and then long enough for it to be, you know, possibly be used, and we'll see how it works, especially in our larger communities like Bonterra, Annandale, Brandon Oaks, that kind of deal. of deal.
So, once you get this rolling, you'll, you'll report that activity as well?
Sometime around the month of December, maybe January, 1st of January.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do they go to the, to you to get it and so they would have to go to where?
Our office right here in Blacktop.
Just right, right there. Okay. Let's say you have a Thanksgiving, my house, we have a lot of family coming in from out of town. Naturally, they can't come and get to park, but could, could I go down and say, "Hey, I expect..."
That's what it's designed for. It's for you to come by there and say, "I've got five or six people coming in for Thanksgiving dinner." And we've got, that parking pass will have your phone number on it. So, because it belongs at your home.
And you'll issue them, in this case, to David and David will pass them out?
No, that way we can contact you, something, we get a 911 call on it or there's an issue with an emergency to where we need to get a, a service vehicle in that we can con, just so we can contact somebody to say, "Hey, we need to get this car moved." Instead of me having to start knocking on doors down your block.
You wouldn't physically give me those, those little...
Yes.
Oh, you wouldn't? And they could put them in?
Yeah, they put them in their dash.
Okay, I got you. And, all right, that, that makes sense. But also people can come down, and I'm just, this makes me think a little bit, which is good. I was thinking people, people like a nurse or somebody would have to come to you to get it, but really the homeowner is, is probably the one that's going to...
Either way, if we, I mean, if, I think we kind of view it in two different ways. If we've got a nurse that we know that, or that knows she works primarily in Indian Trail, her dropping by would probably solve a lot of issues. Because that way she could get the pass and she could fill it out. It's in her car all the time instead of, you know, you're using the nurse and they come by. But if it's like a one time deal, I mean, it's not, not really that big of an issue. But if it's something where it's continuous and repetitive, I think that's what we're trying to kind of combat between, you know, that, the medical field and the maintenance, the, the grass cutters and the trailers and the people calling about blocking driveways and that kind of deal.
So if my daughter's boyfriend parks out front every other night, he can't, I can't come over and get a pass for him and say, "Yeah, I'm kidding." I'm done.
I had a couple of questions, Captain James. Are you planning on finding like one neighborhood to roll this out as a, you know, like Brandon Oaks for three months and/or all of Indian Trail?
I'm going to push it out, Indian Trail.
And what happens at the end of three months if, if it doesn't work out the way you hoped it would?
We'll scrap it.
Wouldn't do it.
We just won't do it.
So, so one of my, one of my thoughts was, okay, so I, I'm going to have a party Friday night. So I'm going to go see Captain James and I'm going to see him next Friday and the following Friday. Is there going to be a limitation on these permit passes? And how long would the permit passes last for? So there's some things that I, I mean, I like the idea, but I think there, one of the things that I was running through my head is like, you know, man, if I rolled this thing out, maybe I should do it for Bonterra, Brandon Oaks only, see how that works. And then if it flies after three months, let's roll it out to all of Indian Trail.
The answer part of that, not to interrupt you by any means, but the answer part of that, I think if we issued permits and it got into the every weekend type deal, we're going to have a record of that. And we see this turning, turning a problem or turn to a problem, we'll deal with it a different way outside of the permitting, if that makes sense. The, the time limit on it can be set, like for the medical and the maintenance, we're putting those at six months at a time. So if that person's contracted or contract maintenance for Brandon Oaks and he's in there, the problem we have is, is we find the truck and the trailer, but we have no idea where the maintenance crew is. Because they, they're right off into the sunset cutting grass. So, and being able to contact somebody is the issue. So I, I wouldn't, it really wouldn't matter to me whether they're good for a year or not, because still my guys can roll up and see that parking pass and they've got an immediate contact number, which is, which is the primary, the primary purpose for doing this. So we're not having to knock on doors to chase people down or to bust up in somebody's wedding shower or funeral, God forbid, that kind of thing.
Thanks. I think it's worth a try, sounds good. So are we, are we going to put it in the newsletter and on town social media to get the word out?
Yes, sir. The Captain James will be working with the planning staff and Abby Ball to get the word out.
Okay. The other thing, I just had a couple of things that, okay. The, I just want to say, I thought the union prep was a good location for the rabies clinic because they got an overhang over there and I know they had a good crowd, so appreciate y'all doing that.
Good, I'm glad.
And I've been noticing her statistics here. I mean, years ago I lived in Charlotte and my wife got a speeding ticket and she was kind of upset she didn't get a warning ticket, which I tried to make it better. I told her, "That's okay, I like fast women," but that didn't help. But anyway, and the, but I was noticing here, y'all give a lot of warning citations and I think that's good for saving people's insurance and all that and it's good community relations. But I just wonder, is there like any type of set rules or you kind of leave it up to the officer or, you know, on that?
I leave it up to the officer, but I leave it, I leave it up to them with this. Everybody deserves a little grace sometimes.
Okay, so I just, I just wondered.
It just, a lot of it depends on the background and what they're, what they're doing. And it may be a contact for a situation about a burnout tag light. So, and where I don't want them writing a $288 ticket for a 30 cent bulb that goes in the back of a car.
I know the people at home don't see this, but I just wanted to point out how many warning citations y'all write. I thought it was pretty impressive and give people a break.
But, and again, that's just those two grant guys. That's what those two grant guys issued for the month.
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Captain James, thank you. Couple of quick questions. The calls that you get for 911 for vehicles, parking and so forth, is that because of a medical emergency or is that somebody, some neighbor sees it and they just don't like it, so they decide, "Let's just call 911"? I'm not saying in every, not in every case, but the majority of calls.
I hate to say that one's more than the other, but, but yes, and I don't know for sure that it's neighbors. I'm just saying that it's somebody that...
Some person.
Some person calls in, not liking work hard for.
All right. And the, the, the HOAs, so, so this will not address any issues with some of the streets that we have where vehicles are parked on the street all day, right? This is not going to address that.
No, 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 no.
This is basically for whether some company comes to cut the grass and there is an emergency, vehicles need to get through, hydrant emergency again. So that's really, and, and hopefully the people that visit more frequently to some of these establishments, houses and whatever, would be able to get these, right?
Right.
All right, okay. Do you need, what do you need from us? You're just giving us information, right? You're just...
Right, that's it. I just wanted to like, to make you aware to see if you had any feedback on it whatsoever.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good pilot to try out and see how we can, you know, see what results that we can get. I mean, it's a step in the right direction and hopefully with social media and other, you know, ask Henry, who's always out there, I know he knows all the people. I think it's a, it's an innovative way to try and solve that problem. So I, I think it's something that I would, I definitely support.
Okay.
Yes, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda, consent agenda, if anyone has any questions or if not, I need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, by show of hands. The record showed that's unanimous. That brings us to old business, solid waste RFP update, Mr. McLam.
Good evening to mayor and council. Come to you tonight to tell you that we got three bids in today in our RFP process. So we got back one from Waste Pro. We got back one from Waste Connections and then we also got one from Republic. We have not done any digging in the information yet. We just got them today. We're going to start that, starting tomorrow. We have a committee internal of staff that we're going to hand those out to. They're going to look through it, make some recommendations coming out of it. We're going to run some data analysis and get some information to come back out. We're going to do that over the next two weeks. And then y'all's next council packet, you'll see some of that information will be in your packet. We're going to come back at the next council meeting, which you can see is on the 28th of this month. And at that meeting, we'll give you even more information than what you see in your packet. We'll lay everything out there. We'll kind of tell you the direction that we're kind of heading as we're looking through this process. And then we'll come back, that'll give you a little bit of time to look at it and to ask us questions. And then we'll come back on the 12th of October, looking for a recommendation from council to award our next solid waste contract. That'll then give us the ability to issue a notice of award to the contractor sometime the end of October. And then that'll give them eight months to get up and going for this contract. We did have one vendor that told us that they did not bid because they did not think that they could handle the size of the town and another one that told us the capital outlay was going to be so high for them to get going, they weren't going to be able to do it either. So that should let you know that it's going to take a long time for these vendors to get up and running. We are a very large contract for some of these vendors. So that's why we need that long of a timeframe. It may seem really early, but it's not. It, it's going to take that long for them to get up and running. Any questions?
No, thank you.
I did good then. Thank y'all, have a good night.
Brings us to new business, ABC store update, Mr. Cohen.
Okay. It's been a while since we did a, a store update and I just wanted to let everybody know that last week we got our permit from the county. So you're finally going to see the store start to get built. You know, they, they had all the permits, you know, to do the groundwork now, hopefully. We actually hope to have the store almost built by fall when we first started, but with the way, you know, sewer is and everything else, we've been postponed, but we're on our way. So that's a good thing. As far as numbers for the store, our store's done amazingly well over the last few years. I've got 2018, our ABC store did 4,279,711 dollars worth of sales. In 2019, it went up 7% to 4,559,631. In 2020, we had a 15% increase to 5,252,458. And then our physical year through '21, we did 6,349,592 for a 21% increase. It's, it's amazing. And, you know, some of that is COVID, but if you look at the Charlotte Mecklenburg stores, I think most of them actually during COVID did not do as well. We really accelerated ourselves. And a, a lot of the reason is because I think we have a great staff that works there. We have a great manager that works very, very hard. He, just for instance, recently, if anybody has patronized ABC store lately, if you've been in Charlotte or you've been anywhere, the shelves are, are quite empty. They're, they're, it's hard to get, people get upset. And our store manager has rented a truck and driven to Raleigh, which I don't think anybody else has done and picked up $30,000 worth of inventory to put it up. So a lot of people come to the ABC store in Indian Trail because we have inventory that other people do not. And what happens is once people get used to shopping at a store, they tend to want to come back to that particular store. And I, I have to give him some, some great pats on the back. We've also started a barrel program there. Bourbon is real big and everywhere now and there's a lot of clubs, bourbon clubs and that type thing, but we, we're doing our own barrels and that brings people into the store. There's, there's many different reasons people shop at a store, but having a friendly staff, having some, some manager that, that works extra hard. One of the things that we're very proud of is, is for the longest time, Monroe beat us always. And I'm looking at the statistics here. I'm trying to find the, I had this on a piece of paper, but I forgot it. So now I'm trying to look at it on an email. How we compared to Monroe over the years, in March 2020, Indian Trail passed Monroe in total sales. That, I think that was the first time that we would ever pass Indian, Indian Trail. Monroe had 516,176 in March of that year and Indian Trail had 526,298. So we, we passed them and only one time since that, that month has Monroe beat us. So in other words, we're, we're, we beat them every month. We're up to where most of the time, we're the number two single, single board store in the state. So, you, which is strong, is, is very strong. And I'm very proud of them, I'm very proud of the way they work. I just, I just think it's, it's a great thing. So if anybody has any questions, oh, I do have distribution to the town and for people who want to know how much money that, that comes to the town, in year 2017 and '18, the ABC board gave the town of Indian Trail 325,500. In 2018 and '19, we gave 345,000. In year 2019 and '20, we gave 149,681. And in the year 2020 and '21, we gave 184,000. Now, there is a reason for the, the drop off and the drop off is, is because we've basically kept some of that money so we can build a store. And to do that, instead of borrowing money from a bank, we'll be able to pay cash for it. So we won't have to pay interest to, to a bank. But I think, and all, if things keep going up, going the way they go, in three years, we'll pay that store off. It'll be completely paid off and then all the tax revenue will come to the town. And I easily see tax revenues come, coming into Indian Trail to be over a half million dollars or more a year. So it's really, it serves a purpose. The purpose is to, to, you know, give tax money to the town. I'm very proud of the ABC store. I'm very proud of the management. I'm very proud of the people who work there, very knowledgeable. And that's pretty much well it. Does anybody have any questions about the store?
Nope.
Good, very good.
Thanks for the update. Brings us to MOA resolution, 2109, opioid settlement funds.
In just a second, I'm going to introduce your town attorney, who is going to take a 53 page memo and cut it down to two minutes. It will be an amazing piece of work. Perhaps you've seen the court cases come out of the Ohio courts about the opioid addiction settlement, kind of like the tobacco settlement a few years ago. But in this one, the approach is that the league of municipalities and the county commission association got involved early with the state so that instead of all of the money going to the state, a higher percentage goes to local government. And Karen will walk you through a resolution that we'll need you to approve and answer any questions that you might have pertaining to this subject.
Yes. Mr. McLaurin hit the high points, but the, what has happened is there is a proposed settlement before a federal court in Ohio, who is hearing what's now a class action of municipal, or local government across the country with regards to settle, the opioid, the opioid settlement. The North Carolina is targeted to receive about $850 million in settlement funds. Like Mr. McLaurin said, the county commissioner, the commissioner, the county commissioners and league of municipalities have been working with the Department of Justice with the state to create a distribution system for how those funds that come to North Carolina will be distributed. The, under the memorandum of agreement, which is before you all tonight, the state will receive 15% of the, of the monies distributed to the, out of the settlement. The local governments will receive 80% of that distributed. And if the counties are able to get signatures by their towns of over 30,000 people to the Department of Justice prior to October 1st, the county will get a 5% kicker, a bonus for wrapping this up so quickly. And so that's why it's before you all tonight. The plan going forward would be that the town of Indian Trail would most likely allocate its share of the, of the funds to the county because the county would then have significant resources to invest in the... to invest in the agreed-upon uses for those opioid funds. And those include rehabilitation, homes, halfway houses, education programs. The list is very long. There are some pretty robust reporting requirements, but by having the county receive all those funds, they would be able to put the programs and the plans together. The town does get to participate through annual meetings with the county to help guide the strategic use of those funds. But again, a lot of that's up in the air. We don't know how that's exactly going to play out. This particular agreement right now is just a mechanism by which the state gets the allocation mechanism that they want in place. And so that's what's before you today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
You mentioned something about 30,000. Can you just clear that up a little bit? Because we're not looking for 30,000 of resident signatures. You're looking for the bodies that represent people with a population size of over 30,000 to sign on, giving the county the ability to appropriate the funds as designated by the agreement, right?
That's exactly right. So if they get the towns with populations over 30,000 signed on early, the, they get, it's an indicator of the participation by the local municipalities. And that we're rewarded for that. The county's rewarded for that by getting this 5% bonus.
All right, because it's 95% versus 100.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
No, that answered the question, because I was a little confused when you said 30,000 signatures or.
No, sorry, yes, towns of over 30,000 citizens have to sign.
Mike, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay, okay.
We have two resolutions that the board's being asked to approve.
It's a resolution and then the actual MOA.
Yes.
Do we have those in terms of a copy of them?
Should have been in the packet.
They're in your agenda package, I think. Is that right, Karen?
I just got the agenda.
Do they need to be read out loud? Karen?
Yeah, can I?
Mayor, I don't think it's very long, so you could, if you wanted, to read it out loud.
I just can't find the one here.
Mr. Mayor, you can proceed. I just read this. You can go ahead.
Okay, well, are you okay to approve the resolution? We need a motion. Okay, we need, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Mr. Morse has made a motion to approve. All in favor, by show of hands? That would be unanimous. We need, what's the other motion for? We need a motion to approve the MOA between the state of North Carolina and local government on proceeds relating to the opioid settlement. Anyone?
So moved.
Mr. Morse has made the motion. All in favor by show of hands. Record showed that was unanimous also.
Thank you.
That brings us to the American Rescue Funds. All right, yep. Update. And resolution.
This presentation will be done by Jim and I. And can you go find him, please? While we're waiting for Jim, David, as I've told you before, every time I go down Monroe, Old Monroe Road, and I look to the right and I see a moving dirt, I think about you. I'm so excited that they got this second store going.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Did you find Jim?
He's right behind you.
All right, this is what we're going to do tonight. Jim is our point person on the American Rescue Fund, and I will tell you, the American Rescue Fund is a moving target. So Jim's going to kind of walk you through as how much money we've got, the deadlines, some of the categories. And when Jim has completed his side of the presentation, I'm going to very briefly talk to you about three potential models that you might want to look at as far as your decision-making process. I'm not going to ask you to make a decision on either of those models tonight, but we will schedule it for two weeks from tonight. We'll reach out to all of you and then try to get a consensus on how we want to move forward. So without further ado, Jim?
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, everyone. Good to be before you tonight. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So working left to right, we're going to start with the first brown arrow. So this basically is the five categories so far we have, and it's a moving target, as Mike said. We're still getting guidance from the U.S. Treasury. For $12,774,000 is what we've been promised. We got the first half. It's in the bank on August 20th. So let's start with the first brown. So the first brown, one of the things Mike and I went over, and there's a committee, Todd's on it, Alicia Gatti, is would be ventilation system improving here, improvements here at Town Hall. Capital investments in public facilities, we are considering a generator. That would ensure Town Hall is open. If there's something going on, people have to come in. And the last one here, work with Captain Kevin to identify officers that worked on COVID-19 issues. So if we can find Cap, he's right there. If we can find Captain Kevin, we go over, if he could identify a couple of officers that did COVID-19, we'd be able to get reimbursed for that as well. The second arrow, the brown 10 number two, this is non-for-profits fit in here. This is one that we helped out. We got the CARES Act money. This is a little bit trickier, though. This is tougher, strict guidelines. We need signed contracts, and we have to monitor. So that's going to be tough to get that through. But again, we have $13 million, and so far, it's been very strict, and we can use it on. Next would be assist small businesses that were impacted by COVID-19. Councilman Todd, I'm sure you know some small businesses in town. Assist households with rent issues due to lost jobs due to COVID-19. And the last one on that second is the assist home household with childcare expenses. So we get people back to work, if that's a possibility. Mayor, I know how popular you are out in the community. I'm sure that touches. The yellow, the yellow doesn't fit. That's a revenue replacement. Now, the only revenue that we are down this year was parks and rec, and that was understandable because our fields were open. But in total, sales tax was great, ad form taxes. So basically, our revenue in total was up, so we don't fit in the yellow category. The blue is very hot button lately, the premium pay. This has been a hot topic. We've been watching all the seminars and still waiting for a clear definition, but essential workers, and this goes back to March of '20, that worked during the COVID. So we're thinking like people like Adams folks that were cleaning the parks, code enforcement people were out there, and essential workers, like the people on my staff that were doing the payroll and the accounts payable. And again, Mike and I haven't talked too much about this because this is still open, but the city of Durham sent their plan in, and they're giving premium pay to 63% of their staff. So just to let you know that part. The last, the green is the infrastructure. This is the best match we have. Water and sewer projects, team up. Now, this one, we'll get Karen involved in. What they recommended here is if we work, say, with Union County with water and sewer, make sure we have contracts, Karen, that puts us in ownership. So if they put a new pipe down Indian Trail Road, Mike, they want to make sure, if we work with Union County, they want to make sure we have some ownership rights. Water, stormwater projects, there's plenty of those out there. Broadband, I met, and Mike and I have talked with Hayden, we like to get the parks on board. Hayden said it would be a safety and security issue. It'd be a good place for kids to go if they have a problem at school, to go do their homework there, put some benches where they can get on the Wi-Fi. Again, the bottom line so far in everything we've heard is be patient. There's more guidance coming. So with that, Mike, if there's any questions, I'll turn it back over to Town Manager Mike. Todd?
Well, they sent a lot of rules, and I just wonder if they sent any practical resources. I mean, like, is there like forms or different things set up for like a small business to apply? Would the town have to basically create all its own resources for people to do that? Or is that kind of provided in the stuff they sent over?
That's a good question, Todd, but I think, you know, it would basically be an internal document at this point. I haven't seen anything standard, but if we had a business that was impacted by COVID-19, I think we should bring it forward and go to the next step. We have contacts. The league has been great. The.
I didn't know if they had so many different levels of rules and what you could do, or if it's kind of just, it just seems real vague, you know?
Right, it's very vague. And it's $13 million, and if we don't spend it, and the dates are 2024, we have to have the money accounted for, covered, spent by 2026. If not, we have to return the money. And that would be a shame, because I'm sure there's needs here in this town. Mike?
Let me add a couple things. Touch on what Jim said. It is a moving target. The league has been really in a leadership role as far as providing information, best practices, and we're tapping into that. As far as the business thing, we're probably going to steal the best idea from the best city that we possibly can instead of reinventing the wheel. The School of Government has also been holding open sessions, and Jim and his folks have been attuned to every one of those. And there have been a number of situations that have come up where Kira Mazony, who is one of their top professors there, will say, we don't know the answer. One of the things that we think will happen is that as we get into this, you may see the rules start to change a little bit, maybe start to loosen up. There is a bit of a concern that we have because there are two deadlines. One is, as Jim told you, 2024, and then 2026, that we might get a sudden crowding of projects trying to run in there to a point that if we contract out certain work, the contractors may not be able to fulfill that. I know that some cities have started to do RFPs. In that light, one of the discussions we had today with Adam and Todd is one of the biggest issues we have in this town is stormwater. Probably a week doesn't go by that Todd doesn't tell me about some sort of stormwater problem. And so we're going to go ahead and move forward and look at an RFP to try to do a watershed study so that, one, we can look at the development, how does development impact our stormwater system, particularly some of our receiving streams, and see if there's some specific projects that may tie into this money. But any kind of proposal, once it receives a certain threshold, will come back to you for approval anyway. But we do want to get ahead of that game. And Todd will be briefing the Stormwater Committee when they meet in October, and hopefully they'll agree that this is something that we want to look forward to. This is all part of thinking and planning for the future as we move forward. Now, three models that we've looked at as to what kind of process do we want to use in how to make this decision. Model number one could be that the staff and the council collaborate on issues and ideas and approve an overall plan of we would want to dedicate $1 million to infrastructure improvements and X number of dollars to address COVID impact or whatever, and tying those into specific ideas. That's option number one. Option number two is for the council to consider appointing a small, and I want to stress small, committee consisting of some of you, some of our staff, and some folks from the community, either citizens or some of the business owners, that can, we, all three groups can work together to identify what priorities do we want to use for that money. Option number three is kind of a hybrid of option number two, is that we would have a small committee. And once we come up with some sort of draft plan, probably in early 2022, we would then have some well-organized community listening sessions, but so that there would be a structure to those community listening sessions as to how the money could be used, and then take the community's feedback and feed that back to you for final decisions. So again, I'm not looking for a decision tonight. I want you to think about that, and hopefully in two weeks, we'll be able to come back and make a decision on which way you want to go. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. McIntyre?
I know you said it's a moving target. It's going to change some rules, maybe loosen some things, maybe firm up. But in terms of, one of the important things that we know that individuals have, you know, been affected by the pandemic, also businesses as well. Is there a, what, is there an amount that we have to allocate for lost revenue for businesses? If there is, how do, is that known right now? Let me, let me let you answer that question and then.
All right. I am not aware of any stipulations or limits as to where the money can go per pot of money.
Okay, so the $6 million we received, we've received it, right? August 20th?
Right.
Right, so the $6 million that we've received, we can allocate whenever the time is, hopefully sooner or later.
Right.
An amount to go towards businesses that are affected?
Correct.
And designate some for nonprofits and so on and so on and so forth.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no limit in terms of what we can use, what we can apportion to these things?
To my knowledge, no, but I'm going to look to my expert over my left shoulder.
Yeah, that's right. There's no limit.
No limit.
And if I may, Mike, if it's a business, Marcus, that, you know, that would be on an individual basis. They'd come in and say, my sales were 20,000 before the pandemic. I lost 20,000, and we'd have to make a decision. But yeah, there's no limit on how we spend the 13 million.
All right, so if I can ask one thing from you, Mike, in the three, I guess you give three different options that we have. If you can spell out a little bit when you, like, in an email to us or something, then here's why I ask that. Because when we are looking at either a subcommittee and then a subcommittee with a hiring component or the staff working it out, I'd like to know a little more. And I know you guys are trying to give us as much information as possible. However, you're limited by what's coming up from the Treasury. But the more information I can get before we get to that point, that way I can make an informed decision. Because I like the fact that we do, we don't have a lot of constraints in terms of apportioning the money, right? But.
And that's certainly a fair and legitimate question, and we can do that. Give us a few days to work something up. And when I send it out to all of you, if your questions have not been answered, don't hesitate to reach back out and let us know. As far as looking at businesses which have lost revenue, I'm going to talk very high level. We would envision some sort of informal process where there would be recommendations made as opposed to just Jim or I saying, oh, okay. So that there is some sort of simple but complete process. Okay? Any other questions?
I have one. It might not be a good one, but a quick one. What about an individual that may have had COVID, excuse me, COVID, lost his job, and has no longer gone back to work? Would it, does it have to be a business, or could it be a, an individual person could come?
As far as, Dave, that would qualify.
And the reason, I know some people that were crippled by, you know, lost their job and never, and still, so I'm just curious. On that end, and last question, who ultimately makes the decision on who gets the money?
As Mike said, you know, it'd be one of those models. It'll either be the council and staff and a committee with lawyers and bankers. We're not sure, but I think it would be a team decision, Dave.
Yeah, there would, I imagine there's going to be government, you know, it's unconstitutional for the town to do some gifts that would be considered the wrong kind of gift. There are going to be lots of parameters around applications, the nature of the distribution, that kind of thing. I don't know what those are yet, because again, this is kind of up in the air, but there will certainly have to be bars, you know, around, and certainly procedures around how the, it's determined who gets the money and how much and what happens with it, just in order to comply with our state's constitution. So, and I've seen some stuff in the legal world about what people are looking out for. So that's, it's an issue that we're just going to figure out how to handle. It's not, someone's not going to be able to walk into Town Hall and say, hey, you know, here's my check. That's, there will be much more to it than that.
And the other thing, if I could add, one of the things that came out, there are some, and don't ask me examples because I can't think of one right now, that federal law will allow, but that state law doesn't allow, so that we have to kind of navigate through those landmarks.
Either to you or Karen, are there going to be buckets? In other words, we can. Either to you or Karen, are there going to be buckets? In other words, we can put it all in one bucket, or has it got to be spread? Is there going to be any percentages that we're going to be tied to?
You want to try that?
Yeah, that's going to be your choice. And so that, it'll be, again, Marcus was talking about the allocation of the funds. It's up to you all. So you can, you can say, you know, we're going to provide low interest rate grants to businesses harmed by COVID, for example, low interest rate loans. And we are going to have a pool of, you know, we're going to put a million dollars in that thing, and we're going to take applications and first come, first served on the applications that pass muster. So, and you know, until, until that amount's used up. So that's exactly how you could do it.
The other thing, I'll hit two points on that, is I suspect as we go through this process, your initial bucket allocation, if you will, will probably shift a little bit as we go through it. The other point is that the LGC, the Local Government Commission, I'm sure will be heavily involved in this, because we are dealing with local government. We are dealing with public funds.
It just seems the people that this is most designed to help the most, where it says like workers and households and like Mr. Cohen mentioned, someone who's been affected by this, it just seems like it becomes more of a logistics nightmare to set parameters to help those people. So I guess, like you, I'm kind of looking at this and going, what's the reality of it? I mean, can we, you know, really come up with a form or a process or guidelines to actually help the individual that's been most affected?
I think, you know, as this program goes and develops, again, I'll go back to what the league talked about. They've got some best practices or examples of what other cities are doing. And so we're going to try to steal the best idea that we can that will be the most effective process without, without increasing the bureaucracy in the process.
Thank you.
Okay. You do have, Mr. Mayor, a resolution before you that we do need to get approved. It is an update to the amount of money that you have received.
Resolutions should be in your packets if we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. two one zero nine one four dash zero two.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve the resolution for the American Rescue Funds. All in favor? That's unanimous. Brings us to the manager's update, sir.
Okay. Point of personal privilege, Mr. Mayor, on what we talked about earlier today, I'd like to give a shout out to my oldest child's birthday, and she is a former resident of Indian Trail. She no longer lives here, but she misses Indian Trail. So shout out to her if that's okay. I want to talk about several things tonight. I'm going to talk about the update on our bond sale, and I'm going to do it in three ways. One, I'm going to let you know the date of the sale, and then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about how we were rated and how that works and what that means. And then I'm going to give some comments from our financial advisor, Doug Carter and Associates, who that was a change from the previous financial advisor. I can say Carter and Associates did an excellent job. We used the same bond attorney. Our bonds are slated to sell on the twenty-first of September, which is a week from tonight. Okay? So we will know shortly thereafter what that went for. Now, let me talk about the other thing. There's a lot of moving parts from the time that we agreed to sell these bonds a few months ago to where we are tonight. And one of those most important parts deals with the rating agencies, because it's going to be the rating agencies that determine how well we do or not do. And many of you know that there are two rating agencies. There's Moody, for example, that you've heard of, and maybe Standard and Poor's. So one part of that is that Carter, Doug Carter and Associates, they work with the rating agencies, they work with the LGC, they work with our staff. But there's also a conference call that we have with the rating agencies. And we had it a few weeks ago. We had Brandy, Jim, and myself along with the folks from Carter and Associates. We finished Moody's, and then we went with Standard and Poor's. A few days ago, they did, they gave the official rating for the town. Moody's came in at double A one. Keep in mind that the highest rating you have
Triple A.
is a triple A. So we're one notch below that. Standard and Poor's came in at A, A, A. We're at the top. According to Standard and Poor's, not every city in North Carolina is rated, and in fact, a lot of them are not rated, but there are nineteen cities in North Carolina that have a triple A rating from Standard and Poor's. Apex, near Raleigh, of course, the Charlotte, Cornelius, you've heard of that town, Fuquay Varina, Garner, near Raleigh, Holly Springs, you've heard of that, Holly Springs, Huntersville, Morrisville, near Raleigh, Davison, and of course, Wake Forest, just north of Raleigh. And of course, you have Union County, Wake County, Mecklenburg, and Charlotte. So you should pat yourself on the back for the hard work that you've done. Last part of my presentation on the bond sales. Some of the comments that came out were our strategic location, our growing diversified economy, the strong efforts by this mayor and council to align various groups to add support to economic development efforts in the town, sound manageable population growth, the recent decision by the council to leave the tax rate at its current rate in order to provide the additional needed revenue to support population growth was highly prized. Also, the fact that you're starting a CIP program, a capital improvement plan, and it will really help once we start to implement what we plan to do. They also praise a prudent and cost-efficient budget management, including the partnership with other government agencies such as the Union County Sheriff's Office to provide law enforcement services. Our fund balance, our liquidity, were all seen as showing us as being very strong. Strong management of the town with active participation by staff and the, and the council was seen as another reason for this rating, along with other reasons. You should give yourself a hand. You've done well. Am I excited about that? Okay. The other thing, the other bit of good news I want to report to you is we have received designation from Money Magazine that Indian Trail is within the top fifty best places to live in America in twenty twenty-one. You may be interested to know that we beat Raleigh. We beat Hilton Head, South Carolina.
Wow.
So congratulate yourself. You're doing some things right. We don't want to get uppity about it, as they say in the country, but we want to keep striving and moving forward and thinking towards the future. The other things I want to report to you is that if you have not been to our Hits After Six, we have one Thursday night. The other night, the thunderstorm ran them away when I was getting ready to go out there. I invite you to join it. It's the Tim Clark Band. If you're interested in the Lynx Station area planning for the Silver Line, they will have a meeting on September twenty-third from five to seven. And we've kind of messed around trying to schedule a CIP workshop, and we're just going to do that at your first meeting, October twelfth. I'd like you here by five thirty. And this is what we need you to do. And we've talked about this, and we've talked about this. There are projects that you have already approved that no action is needed on your part. We're just going to keep moving with that. But we have some other projects that we need to get either a thumbs up, thumbs down. Do we move forward, or do we just sit on the sidelines? And so we just want to get some guidance on that. In the meantime, if there are some things that you would like us to also consider to put on the list, we will do that. After the election, and when we get the new board on board, we will then revisit this topic to give the, the three new members an opportunity to weigh in. Right now, we are just focusing on FY twenty-two, but as we grow and develop and mature, we will have the other items on the chart. And so look for that information. Sorry for getting a little giggly about the bond. It's pretty big. That's all I got.
Thank you. Great news.
Karen?
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. I do have a few things, but Mr. McLaurin, I guess we're going to get a sign up saying that, in, welcome to Indian Trail Top Fifty Best Places to Live in, in the USA?
Be delivered in the morning.
All right, very well. That's good. So you're on top of that. I also want to recognize the efforts of the staff, finance in particular. Jim, you and I have spoken quite a bit in terms of the rating. We were AA one for a while. We're still AA one with Moody's, but with S and P, we're now triple A, which is the best that you can get. So hopefully we can continue, get the capital, the CIP implemented, adopted, and that will allow us, will allow Moody's to change their rating to triple A, because that does have, it does impact how much interest we pay on bonds that we issued or our borrowing costs, as we'd say. So it's a pretty good effort by you guys in terms of managing that, steering the town in the right direction. I also recognize the council for being prudent with the people's money, ensuring that we manage it well, effectively, and we put it to good use. So staff, appreciate all that you guys are doing in getting us to that point. Think tonight was a good meeting with some good information. Once you can get some of that back to us, I think it'll be, you know, we can move forward on some of those things. But I think, in overall, I think we're moving in the right direction. So thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night and appreciate the time.
Mr. McLauren?
Thanks to the staff and everybody for the work. I'd like to let the people know as I notified the town that there was some overgrowth in front of a stop sign. And it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that if, if it's a safety issue, the town can go out and get rid of it. So I just want to let people know if you see, you know, overgrowth in front of a stop sign or anything, that call the town and, and we can handle that. And I noticed over there in front of Post Office Drive, y'all treble the trees over there, so I appreciate that. I was, you know, citizen hit, hit me up while I was at the post office, so I was glad y'all handled that. So I do want to congratulate Tammy Deerstein and Randy Simpson. They're getting married on Friday. And as many Simpsons are in Union County, I imagine that's going to be a big wedding. So I want to say congratulations to them. Also, I would like to have my thoughts and prayers go out to Gail Ford and his family. His wife Shelby Ford passed away. He's a former Lions Club member. He, Mr. Ford was also the minister at United Stallings Methodist Church over here. His wife was also district president of United Methodist Women. She was also district president of Extension and Community Association. So they've been a tremendous asset to our community, and I know she'll be missed. So I just want to let everybody know that she passed away and thoughts and prayers to that family. That's all I got. Have a great evening.
I left something out in the ABC when I gave the update. The sheriff's department is now our, looks out for our ABC store. Y'all have done a great job. And Officer Ryan is great. We love him. And we love all the guys coming by there. It's a great team. And you guys have helped make this team an even better team and created part of the success that we have there, and I thank you. Sorry I didn't mention that earlier. So other things I'd like to say, I'm sitting here and smiling too about the triple A rating. That goes to show that I think we have an exceptional man in Jim there that, that, that has done a wonderful job. And you've contributed a lot to that, and we appreciate that. Mike, you've done a good job. You've done a great job. And most of all, I contribute a lot to that to staff. Staff's done an outstanding job in, in making us look great or look good. I mean, this makes us look good. You guys are the ones that, that are the workers. You do it. And I'm very proud of you guys, very, very proud of it. And I'd also like to say that, you know, what the council does best, and what I think, and I've learned over almost ten years on council, is what the council does best and can do best is let this great staff do their job. And I think you've done it, council. And I think we've let our, our, our staff work and do what they do best. They know their jobs very well. And man, I'm, I'm just tickled to death. I wouldn't put down that we were the fifty best city. We're the fifteenth best city in the, you know, so, which is better than, than fifty. And I'm extremely proud of that. And Indian Trail is a great place to live, and it's a great place to work. And it, it's contributed by, of course, the council and staff, and especially the staff. And thank you, staff, for, for everything that you do. And not to be long-winded tonight, but I'm going to be a little bit long-winded. I did, I just want to tell, and a lot of people know this already, but I went to New York with my, my wife and sister last week. And I love New York, and I've been there a couple of times. My wife had never been there before, and she was like a kid in a candy store. It was, she just loved it. It was absolutely beautiful. But this is kind of a story, not to get off topic a little bit, but my dad in nineteen thirty-three or nineteen thirty-four came over, he was as a German Jew from Germany, and Hitler, of course, was in power at that time. And he came over in the bottom of a boat, a big cruise liner, didn't speak English, and he didn't have a job. And he basically was running for his life. And he came to New York. And when we were in New York, we were riding in a little cruise thing, and we rode by the Statue of Liberty. And I happened to look over at my sister. We were sitting at a table on the top deck of this boat, and I saw the tears coming down her eyes when, and I knew what she was thinking, because she was thinking the same thing that I was thinking. She was thinking that that's the first thing that, that our dad saw when he came to this country. So it was a, it was a touching event for me and my sister. But the whole point I want to make is, is he ended up, of course, getting a job and raising a family, joining the army. And what a great country we live in. We live in the greatest country in the world. It, it, it created a, gave him life. It gave us a family. And we should appreciate that we live in the USA. And God bless the USA. So I just, with that being said, I want to close this out. And I'm extremely proud of you guys for, for all you do, and you do for our town. You're, you're the best. All of you. So thank you.
Mr. McLauren?
Excuse me. Yeah, very good meeting tonight. I just wanted to say that that was a great remembrance ceremony that was put on this past Saturday for some more of our heroes, and that is our police and our fire. So that when, when we do get into some of these additional monies down the road, I know there's been some discussion about trying to help out with the sheriff's department. I want us to also maybe not forget our fire department as well in some of those discussions. And anyways, y'all have a great night.
I just want to thank staff. Staff has brought us where we're at, no doubt about it. And each and every one of you have done a tremendous job. And I can kind of go out on a good roll. And it's, it's very pleasing to see the ratings, to see where the ABC is going. And without the sheriff's department, we couldn't do any of it. And, you know, you're, you're the, you're the one that keeps us all safe, and we appreciate that. So again, thanks, staff. Everybody have a good night.
They pretty much summed it all up. Thanks, Jim, for all you do, Mike, for the job you've done. Congratulations on being with us a year, or my condolences, whichever you want to, you wish to take. All staff does a great job. Yes, even you, Karen, sitting there. And Captain James, thanks for the job you and your... And Captain James, thanks for the job you and your, your staff does, not only just in Indian Trail, but all around the county. And Jerry, that's a good point you made about fire departments and first responders. I agree with you. And it was a great remembrance ceremony that Hayden put together. If you would, thank Hayden and his staff for being there, and Abby, all you did to put it in and promote it. It was very touching. We had a couple of first responders from 9/11 here, and some remnants of the building, and a Beanie Baby that was pulled out of the rubble. So just remember, we're still a nation, greatest nation there, David, as you put it there, and we're going through some tough times now with the pandemic and lots of differences. Let's remember to pull ourselves back together as one and not make it another tragedy before we do. That being noted, everyone, we need a motion to adjourn. There's nothing, Mr. Morse has made the motion. All in favor? Good night, everyone.